Good evening. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person who make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The city charter of section nine dash eighteen mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy which in short provides for citizen input on planning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. There's a sign up sheet that is located at the back of the room for anyone interested to sign up. Good evening. My name is Gloria Pacheco. I'm standing in for the Chair, John Ferrara. And this is the public hearing of the Fall River Planning Board. Roll call, Mario Luciolo.
Yeah?
Mike Faris.
Here.
Beth Andre.
Here.
I am Gloria Pacheco, and as I said, absent today is John Ferrara. We also have present with us Gary Leet from FRG TV, as well as Dan Aguirre, the Director of Engineering and Planning, as well as Chris Pirano, Assistant Planner, and Nina, of course. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are beginning new business. We have Form A, Application for Endorsement of Plan Believed Not to Require Approval A&R Plan of Land File Number twenty-four dash fifteen seventy-three. The applicant is the North Congregation of Jehovah's Witness, Fall River, Massachusetts, Inc. There are three property addresses here. The first one is property location one hundred Northeastern Avenue, Assessor's Map L dash zero-nine Lot eighty-four. Owner is the North Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses, Fall River, Massachusetts, Inc. Second property location is one forty-two Northeastern Avenue, Assessor's Map L dash thirteen Lot nine. Owner is Roy Lorenzo and Michelle El Costa. The third property location is one forty-one Savoy Street, Assessor's Map L thirteen Lot six. Owner is John P. LaRue.
All right, so you may recall looking at a plan similar to this at the last meeting, which we denied endorsement on because the attorney and the surveyor had not provided us with the additional information that I had asked for prior to the meeting. So after speaking with Attorney Delaney and the surveyor Alan Nelson, we were able to get this revised plan in that pretty much responds to just about everything plan-wise which we could be asking for. And what they have shown on this plan is the seal off to the left-hand side where they have it labeled existing. That is the existing ownership of the rights to the private way known as London Street. So if you remember on the original plan, London Street wasn't even labeled whether it was private or public. So the first thing we made them do was label this as private. And with that being the case, and with the research that the attorneys has done specifically with the Derelict Fee Statute of private ways, the abutting landowners for the length of their frontage would own the fee in the way to the center line of the private way. Now again, we talk about all the time, we have fee in the way, which is the ownership of the actual land, but then there are rights for passage, construction, utilities, everything else, that's a separate issue. On this plan, we are not dealing at all, and again, this is under an A&R endorsement, we are not dealing with people's rights to the way. Anyone who has rights to the way are not affected by this plan. This plan only deals with the underlying ownership fee in the portions of the way. So what's brought us here is that the Jehovah's Witness facility at one hundred Northeastern Avenue had constructed a parking facility, which on the plan you'll see a lighter dashed line that shows the limit of their edge of pavement. And that parking facility extended beyond the halfway mark of London Street. So they went beyond what their fee ownership in London Street would be. So through the court proceedings, this basically responds to an agreement between three different parties, which would be the Jehovah's Witness Hall, the Lorenco-Costa family at Lot zero-nine, and then also Mr. LaRue, who was here this evening with regards to one forty-one Savoy Street. And so if we look to the right, you'll see, let's take parcel B, for instance, that you see on the left scenario, where we have two thousand and fifty-nine square feet. We look to the right, what they're proposing to do is to cut out parcel B-one, which would be two hundred and seventy-seven square feet. So that area of B-one would be conveyed to Jehovah's Witness. And what that does is that allows, you'll see the underlying dashed line for their parking facility, their parking facility would now fall within that new limit. Similarly to the next lot, which is at one forty-two Northeastern Avenue, there's a much larger encroachment there, they would be creating parcel C-one, which is eight hundred and fifty-two square feet.
Excuse me. Does this have... Oh, okay. Sorry. Let me go. Thank you. Sorry.
So conveying that parcel. So what this basically does, it eliminates encroachments. Normally, it's not as this convoluted to eliminate encroachments because we're dealing with just normal lot lines, not private way lines. So this has gotten muddled a little bit because of private way and statutes that accompany that. But for A&R purposes, this plan meets the requirements for such. We've asked him to add notes to the plan with regards to the ownership and the fee, also that the parcels being created, which we're only creating two parcels, B-one and C-one, their label is being deemed unbuiltable lots. So those parcels will get conveyed. Parcel B will stay in the ownership with who owns parcel B now, the remainder of parcel B, and parcel C as well. So at the end of the day, the intention of this is just to eliminate that parking area encroachment for ownership purposes. Let's take someone who's not a party to the subdivision, for instance, which would be Mr. Reese at the end of Savoy, the end of Savoy in London, if you see that map, L-nine Lot seventy-four. So his lot is unaffected by this. He has rights to this way for passing and repassing, and other people that were on this subdivision at some point in time may have rights to it as well. That is not being affected. If Mr. Reese decides, I want to run a sewer line, and I want to construct London Street from Savoy to Northeastern Avenue, he has the rights to do it, as does anyone else who has rights to this street, above and beyond what we're dealing with today. This is strictly just property line issue with the ownership fee in this private way. We are not dealing with anyone's rights. Whatever the agreements are between these three parties with potentially relinquishing rights is beyond the scope of the planning board, and that's going through the normal jurisprudence process that's already going through. So that's all I can offer on that.
Okay. So you just, you said the purpose of this plan is not regarding ownership?
No, it's ownership, not rights.
Okay.
We're not dealing with rights. We're dealing only with ownership, the fee in the way.
On the left-hand side, the fourth paragraph, the purpose of this plan is to show ownership of parcels B, B-one, C, C-one, and D?
Yep. So ownership, not rights. So it's not saying that it's eliminating anyone's rights.
Right.
We're just conveying parcels.
Right. And then because that was a private way, we're trying to figure out ownership, even though the statute does give them till midway of the street, you have to go to court still.
If they want to do anything with regards to the rights in the way, that requires land court.
Right, so, right. And then I got the letter from the attorney.
Yep.
So the docket number is wrong.
Okay.
Did you look up the docket number?
No.
Well, I did. And the way the letter is drafted, it appears as if, quote, previously, okay, references, quote, "as a result of the judgment by the land court in the quiet title action." That's in continuance. On April twenty-fifth, there's a motion to continue that was filed. There's nothing going on. There's nothing going on at all.
It was not resolved yet.
Nothing.
So what, there was, my understanding is, because I've spoken to two attorneys, Mr. LaRue's attorney, as well as Jehovah's Witness' attorney. Jehovah's Witness filed an adverse possession. That's the court.
Adverse possession or petition to quiet title?
I was told adverse possession is what started this process.
Okay, paragraph two on the letter.
And through that process, and this is what Attorney Lawrence explained to me, through that process, this settlement agreement is what came out of it. Whether or not court case is finished or not, I don't know, to be honest. I don't care. I really don't think it has bearing on an A&R plan.
So I think it does matter, because once we get this recorded with either my signature or John's signature.
Yep.
People are going to reference this. To me, this is like us approving a plan to be submitted to the ZBA before they've approved it, before the owners who are extinguishing any rights have had a say, before the judge has had a say, before there's an agreement signed by all the parties that be. Even if all the parties that be have signed an agreement, there's still to go through land court to figure out all this stuff.
I disagree, but all three applicants have submitted letters of consent for this plan, that they're...
And there's one that's in default.
What do you mean in default?
There's one owner of one twenty-three, one forty, one twenty-three Savoy Street, they're in default, they did not reply.
Which property, one twenty-three?
One twenty-three.
He's not a party of this. No, they're not touching this line.
Right, but there, yeah, there's just a lot of stuff going on here, so...
No, there is, and if you need more time to look at it, then so be it. Again, this is, this is an A&R, very narrow in scope of the questions you should be asking.
Yes.
And what we should do with it. So I can only explain to you...
But B-one is in the private way, right? Parcel B-one is in the private way?
Parcel, parcel B-one is coming out of parcel B, which, yes, which is part of the way.
And that's my issue. My issue is the private way, we cannot, we cannot determine ownership, even though there's a statute for it. They have to go through the land court process.
So, one forty-one Savoy Street, his fee in London Street is parcel B, which is to the center line, the projection of his frontage. Also parcel A, but parcel A's not being subdivided. Mr. Reese owns this piece, which is not being touched, so it's not even labeled. So A, nobody's touching that. Parcel B, they're cutting out this little area, parcel B-one, to cover the parking lot, and then that would be conveyed.
So my issue is, this private way...
Yep, it's still there.
Is in theory owned by the person or persons or entity who created this subdivision a hundred years ago.
The attorney's assertion is that it's the Derelict Fee Statute that overrides this.
Right, but it has to be given proper notice, and has to go through land court, and once that gets signed off, then we can say that they own till the midway. Until then, they have other parties.
Then again, so you don't have to endorse it, again.
Yeah, so I know, so the ownership thing, I know about that statute.
I explained to him specifically what your concerns were last time.
Thank you.
And I asked him to come to the meeting.
Yes. And the other thing was, I did look up the case, and I thought, because I was going to say, I want a copy of that agreement or that decree recorded, like we do for the ZBA, we have that recorded, and then we sign off on the plan that gets recorded. So I looked it up, wrong docket number, nothing's going on, there's been just an amended complaint filed and continuance, with all the attorneys being notified. So I do not feel comfortable with this at all. To me, this should come back to us once the land court has issued a decree, or then at that point, like the ZBA has given a variance, then it comes to us, and we, then it's an A&R, approval not required, in my opinion. Although, well, I'll hear from the parties that are present, or any board members, any questions?
Obviously, you know.
Well, again, this is, this is complicated.
Well, I know, I know.
But that's, I had, I did this in Duxbury for, so, sir, could you state your name? And do you want to come up? Any address, please?
The name is John LaRue. I'm at one forty-two Savoy Street. And I'm just, just to bring you up to date here, the reason why the Reese family at one twenty-three Savoy is part of this is because the adverse possession document that the Jehovah Witness filed, they wanted parcels A, B, and C, for some unbelievable reason.
You said adverse possession. Is that why the docket numbers, I messed up?
Well, that's what I told you. It started as an adverse possession.
Because I have here amended verified complaint to quiet title. Ah, okay, so this...
And I mean, folks, I've got over ten thousand dollars in attorneys and landscaping fees fighting this thing, because I'm protecting Savoy Street.
No, so this is, again, it's, this is a simple plan I have. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. So I'm sorry, so you were saying that there were not a party to this because...
Parcel A has nothing to do with Jehovah Witness property.
Right, but, right.
I understand.
Because they're doing nothing to their property, but they, it's just shown here as showing your rights, your ownership rights, or at least what your attorney and what your surveyor feels are your ownership rights in Savoy.
Absolutely.
That's why parcel A is shown, and that Mr. Reese's is just not involved at all. But Mr. Reese may have been involved in the initial adverse possession claim, because I, what my understanding was, is that Jehovah's Witness wanted to take all of London Street.
Correct. I do not know that. All I was made aware is they wanted A, B, and C.
Yep.
Again, I, again, my advocacy is, I don't want a driveway put into, emptying their parking lot on Savoy Street.
Sure.
That's what I'm fighting for here. So I just want to be sure. And again, that little sliver of asphalt, twenty years ago when I bought the house, we noticed it. My attorney, Bill Kenny at the time, since he passed away, little Bill, nice guy, he asked me, John, does it matter to you? And I said, no, it's a church. What do I care? It's fine. I don't really care. I'm keeping a natural buffer in there. And we are fighting to keep a natural buffer. You drive by the house, you take a look to see what we've done back there, what we've maintained for twenty years? I want to maintain it. I don't want concrete, and I don't want asphalt. So I just don't want a road, but Savoy Street.
All right, sir, but to your knowledge, there's been no decree issued by the court in this matter, correct? This is continuing, there's a motion continued that was doctored on April twenty-fifth?
You want me to find out?
I don't have, I don't have any signed documents yet. I know we've all signed, we've all agreed, and I'm going to give up that little piece of asphalt. And they got stakes in the ground, we're going to put a little post and rail fence in there and jazz it up a little bit.
And hopefully the judge will approve the agreement, and then you guys can come back, and we can approve it.
Having a conversation with Mr. LaRue, coming to the board, trying to figure out where this is at. Gloria had a question about where does this stand in with the court proceedings? Has there been a decree issued yet, or is this still like in a no man's hand, and we're just trying to now resolve it through an agreement? Okay?
No, you can keep it.
Yep. Okay.
Bill Kenny's on it.
Okay, okay.
I was like, I just spooked all my creosins.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, right. So the court...
Who was that?
Attorney Lawrence, Attorney Lawrence. Tom Lawrence?
Okay.
The court is waiting for the endorsement of the plan, then the agreement can be signed referencing the plan to be submitted back to the court. So it's basically just, it's pending now that this information can get resolved and be submitted back to the court.
So I looked at the docket this afternoon, Grant does a little busy. All there were was appearances, motions for enter default, and motions to continue.
Well, there are motions for default from people who didn't respond.
Right.
Which is what Attorney Lawrence said.
So I would think no land court's going to wait for planning board to approve this plan. Typically, what would happen, and things, you know, maybe I'm wrong, the parties would agree, the judge would sign off on the agreement issue decree, and they would have as an exhibit this plan. And then it comes before us as an A&R, because the court has already agreed that parcel A, ownership rights, this exists, or doesn't exist, or whatever it may be. I'm surprised Tom wants this saying that the court needs this.
That's just what he told me. He said, he said, they're waiting for this information to submit back to the court, the signed land agreement between the three parties and the signed plan. The agreement can't come until after the plan is endorsed, again, this is what Attorney Lawrence said. And I asked Attorney Delaney, it's not Attorney Lawrence issued to be here. He just happened to call me and let me know that.
Yeah, and I read the letter from Delaney.
Yep.
Which seems to indicate that it's already been, quote, extinguished as a result of the judgment of the land court in the quiet action title. And there's no hearings, like, there's been nothing going on, so I thought that was very misleading. So I do not feel comfortable at all. Again, and in the letter, it says, although you said it's just about not rights, not extinguishing rights, and the letter says, quote, "Agreement for judgment and boundary line agreements that will extinguish each of their respective rights in a private way."
That's the agreement.
Yeah, so without even seeing the agreement...
You're not asking to review the agreement? We're not, you're not bound to review the agreement, whether it's a good idea, whether it's legal or not.
Yeah, so my contention is, they don't have till the midway until they've extinguished everyone else's rights. Then they have till the midway.
But Mr. LaRue, for instance, through an agreement, which I think is what the agreement is, can be done with his rights to London Street and this parcel. You can voluntarily eliminate your rights.
That's where, that's where you and I are off. I'm saying, my premise is, their rights to the midway exist, if and only if there are no, there's no one else with rights to that section. So for example, if you subdivide an area, right, Dan, and you leave a section a hundred by forty feet where it's going to be the road, but that road never gets built, and then you convey all the lots around it, you technically own that land, correct?
Absolutely. Well, that's when, that's when a lot is constructed or designed and permitted after subdivision control, which this is not...
But this is a private way, so, right, so theoretically, whoever sold these lots or owned this land still owns it theoretically.
Maybe.
And I think the court's going to give it to them, because I don't think anyone...
And they still have rights, and their rights aren't being touched by this A&R plan.
So that's my issue. Let's say the person who has rights still wants their rights.
I just told you that Mr. Reese could build a road down here if he chose to.
Yeah.
Or anyone who has the rights to it.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable, and I would think that the judge is the one who's going to sign off on this.
Somebody wants to make the motion not to endorse it.
And then once, it's like the ZBA thing, once the ZBA approves it, then it's an A&R. This is too fuzzy for us. So once the judge or all the neighboring landowners agree to something, now it's an A&R, now we can record it. But why would the judge be waiting for the planning board's approval on something? That doesn't make any sense.
The judge is waiting for the agreement between the three parties, which you're just saying is that if the three parties deal with it.
So once the agreement's...
So that's what triggers this.
Right, but once I've seen their agreement, so I'm not going to sign off on anyone's ownership of B-one or, yeah, no. To me, London Street, until they've extinguished everyone's rights to it, I'm not, I'm not going to sign off that the purpose of this plan is to show ownership parcels B-one and C-one. That's where my contention is. That midway area, the B-one and C-one, we don't know exactly whose rights those, who the owners are of those until the court says they've extinguished all the rights, or they've obtained it by adverse possession. Then there's a decree, now it's an A&R.
Okay.
So, I don't know if I'm going to table it till next week and have John, or have more information, maybe table it?
No, you can't table it, because it'd be tabled till next month, and twenty-one days will be up, and they can just take the mile on. So you would have to deny endorsement again, like you did last time.
Yeah, and I, and I know you spoke with the attorney, and I read the letter, and again, when I looked at the docket number, I know, I looked at the docket number...
I can only ask for so much, and I asked him to attend a meeting, and he said that he could not be here, so I don't know what to say. You're not comfortable?
No.
I don't vote. It's your job to make the determination.
I don't know how the board feels.
I would, I would just have this denied, and then the situation rectified, and then in proper proportion of it. I know exactly what you're, the dilemma, and you are an attorney, and I usually work with attorneys, but they've had to explain to me on several of these occasions as well.
And every, and every case is different, maybe they have all the ducks in a row, but without me seeing it, I feel funny, because, but maybe there is all this stuff that's in place already.
No, I asked him regards to ownership and fee in the way.
Yeah.
If he doesn't want, if he didn't want to provide any additional information, then you can only act on what he submitted to you, if you're not comfortable with it.
Right, because if we, we needed a court decree, otherwise they would just do an agreement and not file in land court. Right, all the neighbors get together and sign off on an agreement. That'd be so convenient. But there's a reason to go to land court, so you give notice to all these people.
Is anybody denied signing any of the agreement for this?
No, because they're, they're not, no one is being asked to sign on to this for rights in the way, just the ownership.
Of the, of the area, the land area.
Of the fee in the way.
Yeah.
Which is generally to the center line of the way.
Yep.
But, but, yeah, but that's the statute, but you still have to go to land court just to give everyone notice and all that fun stuff, but the way this is here, I don't...
For the sake of moving this along, we're not going to, if you're not going to endorse it, then somebody make a motion.
You're not going to make a motion, Mike?
I motioned not to endorse this until we get further...
No, 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 not further. Deny it so that it's done, because there's no, there are timeframes associated with not acting on an A&R plan, so you have to act definitively, like we did last time.
I'll check it.
And what we do is we send a decision to the clerk saying that it was denied endorsement, case closed. Otherwise, they can go over to the clerk and say, if nobody filed an appeal, regardless of whether you signed it or not, they take the mile on and go, have it denied, action filed with the clerk. If I, the applicant again, if you might attempt this again, a new filing again, hopefully with whatever information. But I would ask that you make a determination of what information specifically you're asking for, so that he can provide it.
Okay, so Mike Faris has made a motion to deny, and seconded by Mario Luciolo. So I would think, once is a court decree, then, then it's an A&R, approval not required, concerned and taken care of by the land court and the neighbors, and we just endorse it, A&R.
So then...
Right.
What happens when it's determined that someone may determine that a decree is not required? So now your approval is, we're not acting until we get a decree. Suppose a decree never comes because one's not required. The court may determine that one's not required. So think about the motion, and what information you're looking for, whatever means that is to get to you.
In this particular case with a private way, we need a court decree.
Okay.
But in another situation, maybe all we need is, like, the landowners all agree to swap land, in another scenario. And again, I read the attorney's letter that you passed for, and it was misleading, and that was even more upsetting.
Okay.
So thank you, Mike and Mario. Agenda item number two.
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry.
But, but now understand that you're not just waiting, you had, you didn't ask for what the decree is to, is to show. So you're questioning ownership and fee in the way.
They don't, yeah, they don't get ownership and fee until the land court says no one else has any ownership in that land.
So just be specific with, with why you're denying it, not what you're asking for, but why...
Well, we don't have to give a reason to deny it, so I'm not going to give a reason to deny it on record. However, this, we are here for A&R.
So if somebody appeals it...
Yeah.
And they ask, what's the, what's the purpose for denial?
Because the statute doesn't say they automatically own that to the center of the way.
That's what, that's what needs to be said here, it has to be a reason.
Yeah, that's why they went to land court and got this action to quiet title.
No, they went to land court because it was adverse possession claim that started this. But, I, listen, I don't want this to come, as much as you don't want, I'm not reading this again.
Yeah.
So I'm not listening.
This is the same, this is the same thing, so quiet title.
I understand that.
That's the same thing you showed.
So what, I want to make sure, it's the same reason you don't want this to come back on you?
Yeah.
It's not coming back on me because the vote was taken improperly.
Right.
So we're not losing this on a technicality.
Good, good idea, yeah.
The motion for denial, you have to deny it for a reason.
Yes.
And to resolve that reason, you're asking for a decree that provides that information.
Right.
Or what is that information?
The plan, the plan says here, paragraph number four, purpose of this plan is to show ownership of parcels B-one, C-one, and that's where, that's in the, that's in the
It's not coming back on me because the vote was taken improperly.
Right.
So we're not losing this on a technicality.
Good, good idea, yeah.
The motion for denial, you have to deny it for a reason.
Yes.
And to resolve that reason, you're asking for a decree that provides that information.
Right.
Or what is that information?
The plan, the plan says here, paragraph number four, purpose of this plan is to show ownership of parcels B one, C one. And that's where, that's in the pri, that's in the private way, and that's where I have an issue.
But, so Nina's, Nina has to write a decision and file it.
Alright.
So it needs to be in a specific sentence, whether you wanna write down exactly what you want her to write in the decision or as part of the motion. I don't want her trying to formulate a decision.
Sure.
Out of the kinds of general conversations that were happening. It should be a formal motion based on a specific reason, and then everybody can act on that.
Mike, it would be beneficial if you withdrew your mo, motion at this point, and, and submit another one.
Hold on, can I just?
Well, once we get the conditions over.
Yeah, I wanna know exactly what the conditions that you have an issue with.
Hold on, yeah, I just.
We can amend the motion, wh, once you come up with what you want us to read.
So I, I did not, this was, the complaint was long, as you know, it's like half an inch thick, right, the complaint?
I'm sorry?
The complaint that was filed is like half an inch thick. I did not print out all the exhibits, because in, in the two-page complaint, or three-page complaint, he references all these exhibits about the land. And he asked the court to issue judgment of, of the plaintiff as, as the fee simple owner and parcel B and C, which I think is gonna get denied. This is the amended complaint, I believe, yes it is. Uh, none of defendants have the right to use the land, from exhibit I, parcels G, B, and C. Um, plaintiff has adversely possessed the land described as parcels B and C in exhibit I, which they don't have. And its use of land is exclusive and not subject to the rights of any of the defendants. So again, the reason this complaint was filed was to determine who's the owner of this land, of these parcels. That's why they're going to court. So until the court has issued a judgment or decree stating that the plaintiff is the fee owner or the plaintiff and defendant's shared ownership, we cannot consider this an A and R plan. Because someone else has to work on it, like the ZBA. Uh, this is not by statute automatically.
Let's, let's narrow it down in scope of what's in the motion of why it's being denied.
Okay, so I would posit that it's being.
You're gonna start writing, Nina?
Yeah.
Let me, let me just, I wanna make the motion, I think I need to know how to do this.
It, it can be symbolized that, that, that clear ownership in the way has not been determined or provided.
Yeah. Exactly. Right, and there's a pending action in court for the judge.
It doesn't matter pending action.
Yeah.
You, you don't even need to know that there's pending action.
That's, that's not part of our record.
The A and R, right, right.
This is an A and R.
Right.
You're not endorsing it because you haven't been provided proof of ownership of fee in the way.
Exactly.
Period.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if it has here a reference to a court order, then that's when, then, then it'd be.
I can't make a motion.
I'm gonna make an motion to den, to deny this, um, on the purpose of the plan as shown, does not show ownership of parcel B, B one, C, C one in accordance to the boundary agreement, uh, and then, um, that it needs to go into Land Court for, for ownership, to understand who the ownership is of those parcels, and then.
All you need to do is say is why you're not endorsing it, not what they need to do to rectify it.
So the ownership of the private way has not been.
Defined.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or provided, information, the, the ownership rights have not.
So would you like me to draw that again?
I want you to endorse it.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Alright. Motion to deny, okay, some purpose of the plan as shown, ownership is not defined for parcels B, V one, C, and C one.
Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second our motion.
Uh, we'll do a roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Uh, Beth, Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes, and John Fer, Ferro is absent. Thank you. I'm sorry, Dan, for putting this position.
Mr. LaRue, you can go. Thank you, and you can advise everyone that plan was not endorsed.
We tried very hard.
As long as I'm not gonna get in trouble by Tom Killerman.
No, 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 no.
It's all gonna happen. I don't think they were very happy.
And, and, no, 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 I, I spoke with Attorney Klarin, and, and he was, he was more than fine with you coming. I, I emailed Attorney Delaney on multiple occasions, asking him to be here, and asking for this information, this is going on a couple of months now. So we'll, we'll respond again tomorrow to Attorney Delaney of why it didn't get endorsed again, and specifically for the reason of denial. And, um, I can include Attorney Klarin on the, on the broad.
P.S. John did cause any term.
No.
Oh, no, no, thank you for coming, thank you for coming, sir, no, we appreciate it.
No, 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 I appreciate it. Like I said, I'm trying to protect some voice, straight.
Sure, understood.
If this is a critical matter, then the client's attorney should have been there to explain this.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree. And, and I told Attorney Klarin that today, he said, well, Attorney Delaney doesn't, that, that doesn't think there was a need to come. Plan to, actually Attorney Delaney's exact words were, the plan speaks for itself. That was in the email response to me, second.
Well, it doesn't.
And I explained, I went in my conversation with Attorney Klarin, as I said, the most simple of A and R plans, I always made sure that I attended the hearing in case there was a question, if it was that important to my client, and a simple question came up, and it got tabled. And now whether real estate could be conveyed or not, and it costs people money, and interest rates and everything else, because you decided not to show up to attend the hearing, that's not how I used to do business, but I can't tell everybody how to do theirs. But again, not Attorney Klarin's issue to be, Attorney Delaney is the one that, that has signed this, and has tried to usher this through, so we'll, we'll pass it along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Will there be another one of these in the future?
Not, not until they file a new plan, so hopefully they'll, they'll let you know.
They won't, I have to ask.
Okay. Well, we did ask.
Bless your heart.
We did require them to, to get an updated signature from you with regards to the new plan, so.
It took about four or five days.
Is that right?
A few conversations with my attorney about it, I didn't really care for some of the word, but.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Agenda item number two, Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval, A and R plan of land, file number twenty-four dash fifteen seventy-eight. Owner applicant Quintel Investments LLC, property location thirteen thirteen, dash thirteen twenty-one South Main Street, access is map G twenty-four, lot three and sixteen.
Nina, do you have, in the file, I've got what appears to be two copies of the original plan. Does everybody have the revised plan? Remember what that says, proposed area?
Oh, um, he, he only changed it on the Mylar. I sent, it's on, the, on the iPad is the scanned in, uh, one of the Mylar.
Okay. We need to print copies of, is it okay?
Okay.
All the paper copies need to be what the revised plan.
Okay.
The copies of that, how about the ones on the computer?
Those are, those are good.
And it's just, it's, it's a small issue.
Yeah.
So this is, um, just a small lot conveyance between two separate properties, one fronting at thirteen thirteen South Main Street, and another property that fronts along Griffin Street, both owned by the same entity.
Thank you.
Uh, ultimately the same entity, Quintel Investments LLC, and then Daniel Quintle Senior and Daniel Quintel Junior, um, that owns the other parcel. So if you look at the very, well, actually you can see it on the larger inset, but on the plan that you see there, you see that odd little crescent shaped parcel. So they'll be cutting out what's labeled as parcel A from thirteen thirteen South Main Street, conveying it to the Griffin Street property. And if you look at the, the larger detailed inset, which is up in this corner of the plan, it tells you what the area is. So it's two hundred and twenty-eight feet being conveyed from one parcel to the other, straightforward, no zoning variance is involved. It's basically to allow the construction of a building on the Griffin Street property and keep the rear yard set back, but you don't need to know that.
The, one question, Dan.
Yep.
It looks like, is there an easement that's going through?
Yeah, so there's two things, because these are being developed simultaneously.
Yeah.
For residential, uh, housing, the drainage from the Griffin Street lot, as the existing condition runs through the South Main Street lot. So as part of site plan review, we require them to grant an easement from one to the other. It's fine when they're all on it together now. Uh, but if they do ever get conveyed, we want to make sure the easement was in place, so this plan was just a good placeholder rather than to file a separate easement plan to show the easement on this plan as well.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? There's no presence, I'm not gonna bother asking. Anyone else in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor, I approve.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thanks, Beth. Uh, roll call Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, um, Ferro being absent. Agenda item number three, Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require a, uh, not to require approval, A and R plan of land, file number twenty-four dash fifteen seventy-nine. Owner is Bank Street Properties LLC, applicant is Rhoda Dice LLC. Property location twenty-four thirty-six and twenty-four ninety-two South Main Street, access is map B twenty-three, lot seven, twenty and twenty-one.
So this is as you're heading south on South Main Street, and you've come up to the, the Y intersection that shows where the gas station is. You bear right directly across the street from what was the Obviously School, it's now actually back to the Fall River School, preschool. Across the street is that Townsend Hill Apartments building, that's what you see shown here as two four three six, the existing building. Which is on map B, block twenty-three, lot seven. There was a church, obviously adjacent parcel.
H one, H two, the next plan.
And then you also see the City of Fall River parcel, South Main Street, which will own it, it's ours now. So when, when the, the Roman Catholic Church owns these properties, lot twenty-one and lot twenty, uh, were actually separate parcels. So one thing that this plan does, it combines those two, so they're not subdivided, they're just combining those two. And if we go up to the, further north of the lot at twenty-four thirty-six, you'll see, um, there's a dashed property line labeled as existing lot lines being removed. What they did was get rid of that odd jog and that configuration, and create a more linear line, um, in between the two separate parcels. Again, all owned by the same entity now, getting rid of that odd shape, combining the two smaller parcels. Again, there are a number of easements on this plan, really nothing to do with the A and R endorsement, but it's, again, it's just a good placeholder to have a plan that they can reference for their easement documentation, so that's it on this one, combining two parcels and adjusting the lot line between that and the existing parcels of the law. No zoning variances involved.
Any questions or comments from the board? Your motion?
I'm motioning.
Beth motions for endorsement of plan, do you have a second?
A second, Nina.
Mike seconds. Um, roll call Mario?
Yes.
Uh, Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes, and John Ferro is absent. Okay. Agenda item number four, Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval, A and R plan of land, file number twenty-four dash fifteen eighty. Owner applicant Divine Development LLC, property location five five four third street, access is map I, eleven, lot thirteen.
Another one of everybody's favorites, uh, we have two existing multifamily dwellings on one parcel, land five fifty-four. Third Street, which is a three-story multifamily dwelling, and then also five fifty-eight Third Street, which is also a three-story multifamily dwelling. This parcel went through the special permit process with the zoning board of appeals, and they had granted, uh, special permit, allowing the subdivision to take place. The subdivision lines shown on this plan mimic what was approved on that, that zoning variance plan. Basically what you see is lot, of the dwelling at five fifty-eight would now have fifteen feet of frontage, which provides access to the existing Batumins pavement driveway, and then that lot line snakes around in between the two buildings, and then heads in the, assuming north is up.
Yep.
Uh, in the east only direction, creating a parcel of thirty-seven forty-four square feet. And then that would leave lot number one on the remaining parcel at three thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. Minimum setback shown of being four point six feet to five fifty-four is in conformance with the zoning variance, as well as the minimum setback of five point six feet to five fifty-eight. That's all.
Thank you, Dan. Any, uh, comments or questions? Jeff?
Just a quick question, do we know why this was taken the last time? Because this was last month's.
No, this one wasn't tabled.
This wasn't tabled, though.
No, but you have, there is the revised plan because they were missing a frontage dimension and a building setback.
Okay, yeah.
So maybe that's.
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's, yeah, I remember, I was talking about it, it's just.
And when the revised plans came in?
This morning.
This morning.
And that's what's on the computer right now?
Yep.
Okay.
And they're in the folder, too.
Yes.
I motion to approve.
Mike motions to approve, do you have a second?
Beth second.
Beth second. Uh, roll call Mario?
Yes.
Uh, Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, agenda item number five, approval of the minutes. Um, I haven't had a chance to review, um, April ninth or April tenth minutes.
We can, we can just table them.
I don't know if you guys wanna table it, or if you, if you guys, have you read the minutes, do you wanna table it? It's the one with the joint city council.
You could, you could take the time and do it again next week.
Yeah.
This wasn't, so it's ZBA, right, that we didn't do minutes last time, so this one.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I apologize, I have.
Yeah, we, we just.
I did review, but if anybody else has it, I, I would rather not.
No, it's, it's fine, we'll just do it.
Can I have a motion to table, uh, the approval of the minutes for April ninth and April tenth, please?
I motion to table it.
Thanks, Mike, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, thanks, uh, Beth. Roll call Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Number six, citizens input. Um, I only have a question, is if we could put on the agenda for next month, maybe the, the, the naming of the, uh, the naming of, uh, Street for Jean Batista Page, if we could put on the agenda item, so that we could have a public hearing on that.
Do, do we have a location?
Well, you, you mean for, just for discussion purposes?
Yeah, and to get the families input, or, because I know they have petition to na, rename third, a portion of Third Street.
Okay.
I know it's been like nine or eight months, just.
Do you want an update on it, or?
Uh, well, we, we've tabled it, definitely, so should we get the petition back in, should we review the Route seventy-nine project, please?
My, my. I don't, I mean, my, my, I can't tell you what to put on the agenda or not, but.
Yeah.
But we're not ready to tell them where we're gonna put it yet, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, um, a very slow and arduous process. Um, I don't have authority to, I know what we'd like, we would like to do, but I don't have the authority to tell you the nasty, it's important, so you're obligated for what to do, um, but I think.
See, we have, we have two separate processes to get that done. When the land gets conveyed to the city, the city can do whatever they wanna do with it.
Yeah.
If you wanna do that now, then the state has to do it. So if, if, if you want, if you want to move forward with asking the state to proceed with it, and that process, whether it's an act of the legislature or whatever, whatever process that takes, we can stop that process.
Well, I know the family members wanted to rename a portion of Third Street, and we had discussed, a viable option would be this new corridor that we're designing.
Correct. Well, again, with, with no timeframe associated to it.
No timeframe, and to this, and today you still have no timeframe, it's three months or a year.
Hey, you, you want us to send them a letter, just telling them that, that they're still in our minds and we're still working towards it, but.
That'd be nice.
I, I, yeah, I, I agree with you, there's a lot that has to, there's a lot, as you can imagine, we're just conveying a little piece of land. Uh, the one that we denied, this is going to be, it's, it's a long process, tedious process. I think ultimately, and I don't know this as a fact, eventually if it gets conveyed over to the city, I think the city would probably, would most likely, see it through and do something in honor of the, of the, of the family, um, of the fallen hero. And, but I think if, just a general letter from the city would just be.
Well, it, it would have to be, all you can do is.
Yeah.
Send a letter from the planning board.
Okay.
So.
Dan, the petition they filed, is there an expiration on that? I don't want it to like fall by the wayside, because it's been a year or something like that.
I don't do so, I mean.
So it's still being tabled?
Theoretically, well, we'll, we'll look at whether it's, was it, was it tabled, or?
Still on, on the table? I thought we had tabled it.
I believe it was, I believe it was tabled.
Tabled, we have two minutes.
The family understood at that point.
Yeah.
That it would take some time because of the Route seventy-nine project, and they were okay with it.
Yeah.
And the original petition did not come from the family, it came from a private citizen.
Oh.
Outside of the family, so.
Yeah.
Just maybe a letter?
Sure, if you would like, I can orchestrate it, send it to everybody and.
Oh, I think Nina can do it, right?
Oh, whatever you want, I don't, I understand your point, it's the city, because they, right now, we don't know whether, how the, how that land's gonna be conveyed from the, from, from the federal government to the state, to the state, to the city.
Well, the streets part is easy.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the, the land part is the difficult.
The land part is difficult, but the street, my, I will say.
But the overpass is gonna be set.
Yeah, the, I, right now, my understanding is, you guys, that's your overpass, and that road is your road, and.
When they, when they complete the discontinuance plan, which they haven't done yet.
They haven't done that yet, and so, um, yeah, I, I would suggest that, uh, I think that would be a good faith effort to, to write him just a letter and just say, you know, we haven't forgotten about you, it's still in the process. This project is not gonna be done until twenty twenty-six.
So, am I writing this letter to, okay?
The petitioner.
To, is it?
It was, I believe it was Colin Dias.
Colin Dias.
Colin Dias who, who submitted it, and then if we have the contact information from the family checking it.
Yeah.
I think, uh, one or two persons spoke, and so the people who spoke, maybe if we could just give them an update, so they know it's still pending and it's not denied, nor.
Yeah, we can track that down. Yeah, and, and, and again, there is, I, I agree, there's a can of orange, because that's already, that's already dedicated, that passed through. That overpass, that's the new one now, is dedicated to somebody new, to somebody.
Well, the old one was.
Yeah, the old, both, there's, there's two people now, so they're both, yeah.
It's actually a little bit of a different location, so, no, so this one's gonna be named, I think, after a few people.
Yeah.
Different locations underneath, above.
Yeah.
Could be, you know, a general veterans that have a certain, clacks with certain people's names, so that has, that hasn't been determined, but it will be acknowledged.
Yeah. So they, so on the, the spaghetti ramp portion, just south of here, they've done this historical boards that, I don't know if you've seen it or not, but it's near the bus stop there and the, the.
I think we have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have to be careful about the discussion.
Yeah. The open meeting law, because this was not on the agenda.
For open meetings, because it's not the agenda.
Okay.
The, I, there's a, yes, there's an input I just mentioned. Yeah, the, I, it was a, yeah, citizens input, I just mentioned that, because it's still being tabled.
Well, no, well, she was asking for it to be put on the next agenda.
Right, because citizens input.
Which is fine, yes.
So why don't we put it on for the next agenda to discuss sending a letter?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so I'll put on the agenda.
And just double check the expiration on that petition that was filed by Colin Dias, so that no one has to jump through hoops again. Any other, no other citizen input comments? So, item number seven, adjournment. Your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Beth, do you have a second?
It's my turn.
Mario, do you second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I'll turn it tonight.